Okay, everybody appears to be in place. We'll call the study session to order. And our first item on the agenda is the swearing in of our new alternate, Raymond Huang. If you could meet Councilmember Anderson for your swearing in.
Hello?
Hello?
Hello? Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Please raise your right hand. I state your name.
Raymond Huang.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
and the Constitution and laws of the State of Arizona.
And the Constitution and law of the State of Arizona.
and the ordinances of the Town of Gilbert, Maricopa County, Arizona.
And the ordinance of the Town of Gilbert, Maricopa County, Arizona.
that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
That I bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
and defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
And defend from all enemy foreign and domestic.
and that I will faithfully and impartially discharge
And I will faithfully and impartially discharge
the duties of the Office of a Town of Gilbert Planning Commission member.
The duty of the Office of Town of Gilbert Planning Commission.
Right. in Gilbert, Arizona, according to the best of my ability.
In Gilbert, Arizona, in the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We need you to sum.
Okay, thank you very much. Welcome aboard, Raymond. It's great to have you. All right, now I will actually officially call to order the study session. And our second item on the agenda, DR 24-79, UP 24-44, and UP 24-45, Pop Stroke. And we will hear from Mr. Keith Newman. Take it away, Keith.
Chair Munt, members of the commission, good evening. As you mentioned, my case tonight for the study session is for Pop Stroke. The Pop Stroke site is in a very familiar site that everybody knows about. It's located off of Santan Village Parkway, south of Ray Road, on that east side of the road, as you can see on the map. And it's right there next to Top Golf and the main event. So we're going to have this little golfing family fun area right here that's going to be improved upon here with this project. So as far as the request is concerned, you mentioned it just a little bit already, but this is for a design review to develop a 64,306-square-foot mini golf facility. And it's an indoor facility. And then also, another request is for a conditional use permit for a commercial indoor amusement use, which is how it's classified in the code. And then also a conditional use permit to approve a parking demand study establishing parking standards for an indoor miniature golf facility for this type of, for this use. And I'll explain a little bit more about that in a second. As far as the site plan is concerned, you can see it on the screen in front of you. There is the site, like I said, is vacant right now, a little, about 4.25 acres or so. It's zoned regional commercial. The site is located within the Gilbert Crossroads Center Planned Area Development, which was established in like 1999. The site is actually governed by, and you can, you probably saw this in your staff report, it's actually, all zoning requirements are per the PAD that's in place and the Unified Land Development Code, which was in place at that time. The building consists of, like I stated earlier, a little, about 64,000-square-foot building that has, and I know you saw it on the floor plan, the floor plan's back here somewhere. I can show you the floor plan really quick. It's actually way in the back. Maybe we'll go there later. But it has, it's all indoor, and you know what, what the heck? I'll just show you the floor plan. Here we go. It's, it's all the way, it's, you have the 64,000-square-foot building, and then you have the indoor miniature golf. There's two courses. So it's 36 holes of miniature golf, all indoors, in a single-story building. There's two other Pop Stroke locations in the valley, one in Glendale and one in Scottsdale, and they're both outdoor courses. This will be Pop Stroke's first indoor course in Arizona. I don't know if they're, they have indoor courses elsewhere. I believe they do, especially in places like Minnesota. So, and then this one also has about 10,000 square feet of additional space where they have a bar, a full-service bar, kind of a dining area, a little, and then also an indoor, a covered, like, play facility for children. All right, let's go back. The site has 100, and, actually, I think that's actually a, excuse me, that's a typo. I think there's 164 parking spaces on the site. The landscape plan, you can see the landscaping all around the building, up against the foundation, in the parking lot. There's a lot of trees and landscaping in the parking lot. Now, you'll notice this design has, the landscape islands in the middle are a little bit different. They're only like five feet wide or so, four to five feet wide, and they're oriented differently than the other landscape islands. This is something that was approved in the main, for the main event parking lot as well. They have the same design. But in the old ULDC, parking spaces were allowed to be, have 12 parking spaces in a row without a landscape island. So that's why you see more spaces in a row without the bigger landscape islands. But they were allowed to have these smaller landscape islands too, based on the old, based on the PAD and the old ULDC. There's about 22% open space on the site, or landscape area. The building elevations, they're approximately 23 feet tall at the roof line. They're obviously much taller than that to the top of the parapet walls. Generally, generally a flat roofing design with stucco and composite metal panels and fiber cement panels and stone veneer. And one of the reasons we're bringing this to you tonight for the study session is to ask for CDs at risk, but also to maybe get your feedback on the design of the building. We're still working with the applicant on meeting the design guidelines that are a little bit different than the, in the crossroads. PAD requires a lot of wall movement and things that our current code doesn't require today. So they're still striving to meet some of those design requirements. But your input and feedback on the building would be, would be appreciated as well. So here's, the bottom one's the west elevation that'll face Santan Village Parkway. South elevation will face the parking lot. And you can see the blue area is where the entrances are, the main entrance to the building. And then here's some of the other elevations facing north and facing east. And the next thing I wanted to talk about, the last thing I wanted to talk about are the conditional use permits. So as far as the conditional use permits are concerned, during initial research for the project, we had to figure out how to classify this use. It's per, like I stated before, the ULDC has a commercial amusement indoor use, but it does not specifically mention miniature golf. But is defined as, which miniature golf is, not miniature golf, excuse me, the indoor commercial amusement use is defined as following. An establishment offering sports, game playing, or similar amusements to the public, including but not limited to skating rinks, bowling alleys, billiards, ping pong, mechanical or electronical games, but not gambling or card playing within a fully enclosed structure. So miniature golf is not mentioned in that definition. However, it is included under the definition for commercial amusement outdoor. That's obvious, obviously, this will probably be the first indoor mini golf facility anywhere in the whole, in this whole city. So obviously, that wasn't contemplated at that time. Because indoor miniature golf isn't mentioned under either definition, staff has determined that Section 4.3.3 of the ULDC would allow flexibility for uses that are not listed from a parking standpoint. So, so the first CUP is for, just to allow the use of commercial indoor use for a miniature golf facility, and the second one is for the parking. So the applicant provided us with a parking study, demand study, through, which requires a CUP approval, allowing a customized parking standard based on comparable facilities. So some comparable, comparable facilities used in the initial study include the Pop Stroke in Glendale, which has 25 onsite parking spaces. And then there, they also have next door, I think it's a Dave and Buster's with a much larger parking lot, so, in a much larger development. So they're allowed to share parking with that parking lot. And they don't really, they don't have any parking problems, according to the applicant. And then the other project is, they haven't put it in the study yet, but next round of review, they, we're hoping they do, which, that's based on the Scottsdale Pop Stroke. The Scottsdale Pop Stroke has 92 parking spaces. And according to the applicant, they don't have really any parking problems. This site has 164 parking spaces, which is well above what the other two Pop Strokes in the valley have. In addition, the applicant has stated that the average Pop Stroke throughout the country, I think there's 10 locations throughout the country, they usually have about anywhere between 110 to 150 parking spaces. So this project is proposing 14 more spaces than the highest average amount of parking spaces at any Pop Stroke anywhere else in the nation. So staff firmly believes that the parking that they're proposing, 164 spaces, is sufficient. So given all this information, one, one interesting thing that I wanted to bring up before I end the presentation is the fact that if you look in today's land development code, we do have a classification, classification for miniature golf, a land use. And the parking for miniature golf is one parking space per 150 square feet of indoor entertainment/recreation space, and two spaces per miniature golf hole. And if you add all that up, it's exactly what the applicant is proposing. So they're actually proposing to meet our land development code, even though they're subject to the old land development code from 20 years ago. So staff, staff is under the belief that the proposed parking will be more than adequate for the proposed Pop Stroke. So given that, like I stated, stated earlier, the applicant is requesting to move forward CDs at risk. And if you have any other comments or questions or concerns about any of the other site design elements or the building itself, we'd love to hear those. So that concludes my presentation. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. The applicant's also here as well tonight, so, thank you.
Thank you, Keith. Anybody have any questions or comments for Keith? Mr. DeGruvina.
Keith, good presentation and a good explanation on the parking, because when I was reading through it before I got here, it looks like they were basing their parking requirement, the parking demand study, on a 10,450-square-foot clubhouse. But there's also, I guess, a code in there too for, which is, excuse me, one per 150 square feet of building, and then two per each of the holes. But then there's the other code, which I think, and you're saying is the old code, which is five spaces per 1,000 square feet.
Yeah.
Which, and for the 64,306 overall building, that brings it, well, I think you said 314 here, but my calculation was 322. So with the studies of the other Pop Strokes, you guys feel comfortable with the 142?
Chair Munt, Commissioner DeGruvina, yes, we do. We feel comfortable with what they're proposing. And like you stated, the old code, the ULDC, would require them to have like 314 parking spaces, which is not feasible on this site, that there's no way that it would fit. They wouldn't even be able to do the project. So 164 parking spaces, we feel is adequate and sufficient for the use.
It does make sense, just because of the buildings, because it's covering, I guess, the complete miniature golf area. So obviously, the structure's bigger, but if that was an open door, the clubhouse would only be 10,450 square feet, and that would bring it down to the 142 parking spots that you've got
Correct.
listed there. The answer is my question. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Commissioner Davis.
Thank you, Chair. Keith, I was just curious, well, first of all, I agree completely on the parking. I think your analysis is exactly correct. It makes perfect sense to me, so no issues with that. My question related to the lighting on the building. It looks like the only exterior lighting they're proposing besides fixtures is the LED lighting near the entrance. But the other entertainment-type uses out there with Top Golf and Main Event have done like a color wash on their buildings at night. I didn't know, are they planning to do anything like that? Like behind the decorative metal screens or anything? Is there any kind of additional lighting that you've heard them talk about?
Chair Munt, Commissioner Davis, I don't believe so. I can find out, I know there might be some uplighting a little bit on the west wall where the Pop Stroke logo is, and they have like a little golf club that's kind of part of the logo.
Right.
But anywhere else on the building, I don't believe there's any other, too many other lighting fixtures. That's something that I can research and find out and bring back to you when it comes back for public hearing.
Thanks. I actually would support it. I think that would be kind of a fun addition. The building's not super lively. I think it would add something to it. And it looks like that area by the entrance is probably a little photo op area, so.
Yeah.
Anyway, I was just curious about that, because I think it's maybe is a missed opportunity to add some nighttime interest to the building, so.
Okay.
That's all.
Good comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Commissioner Simon, please.
Yeah, I was just going to agree with Commissioner Davis on that, that I am a little bit underwhelmed by the building and feel like there can be, from an entertainment perspective, something that is more catchy. I don't have a problem with the color so much, I just feel like it feels very warehouse to me. And so if there was something that could just dress that up. Other than that, I have no problem with the parking, the site plan. I think it's well laid out. It's just the building is a little bit underwhelming for me, so.
Okay. All right, well, you know, I, I would say that with that, you know, and then do we need to make, from a CDs at risk, I guess, that we could get our suggestions to the applicant? I will just point out, there is another indoor mini golf. It's over by Cooper and Warner, by the spaghetti bucket joint. It's a glow-in-the-dark one. I've taken my kids there, but it's much smaller than this. But anyway, is that everything that you need then, Keith?
Chair, Chair Munt, members of the commission, I believe so. I think that will cover it. Thank you for all your input and comments.
Very well. Thank you, Keith. Okay, then we'll move right along into item number three, which is another triple, which is GP 2405, Tustin Ranch Minor GP, Z 2412, Tustin Ranch PAD Amendment, and S 2404, Tustin Ranch and Kristin.
Thank you, Chair. You know, we're just trying to make our presentations efficient by tripling them up like this.
We enjoy that. Thank you.
Right. Good evening, commission. The cases I have for discussion tonight are going to be for residential development called Tustin Ranch. The applications have currently gone through one review with the town. The site is located at the southwest corner of Greenfield and Pecos roads. The applicant is proposing to amend their PAD and also amend their general plan designation to better align with their existing zoning. A pre-plat application will be reviewed concurrently with the submittal as well. And I'm bringing this case forward tonight to receive your input on the proposed request. We're specifically looking for feedback on the proposed deviations, but welcome any additional feedback that you'd like to provide. The site is just under 40 acres and was annexed into the town in the year 2000 under the land use category of one to two dwelling units per acre. The property was also rezoned at that time from County R 43 to R 110 and R 115. The land use and zoning stayed in effect until 2008, when a town initiated general plan amendment was approved for 98 acres, amending the residential land use category of the site to business park and community commercial from residential one to two. The general plan amendment was initiated due to the increased interest in development from the area after the Mercy Gilbert Hospital and the Santan Freeway had opened. This change did require a majority of the 21 property owners at the time to be supportive of the amendment in order to go through. The land use categories of business park and community commercial stayed in effect until 2020, when the 2020 Gilbert General Plan was adopted. And then the plan updated the previous categories to general commercial and general office. The current land use classification remains general commercial and general office as approved in 2020. The requested general plan amendment will convert the site back to residential one to two dwelling units per acre, bringing the land use classification back into alignment with the zoning that has accompanied the site since 2000. The site was zoned SF 15 and SF 10 with a planned area development in the year 2000, and the applicant is requesting to amend that previously approved PAD by bringing a previous 1.5-acre outlier parcel, updating their development plan and requesting development standard deviations. The 1.5-acre outlier parcel is currently zoned SF 35, and once incorporated into the site will be rezoned to SF 10. The updated development plan still includes 76 lots, but will have a proposed density of 1.9 dwelling units per acre instead of the 1.97 dwelling units per acre as previously approved in 2000. The plan on the left of your screen is showing the original approval, and the plan on the right is showing the updated proposal. As proposed, there is one primary entrance to the community from Greenfield Road. The entrance will be gated, and the streets within the community will be private. At this time, there are two emergency access points being proposed, one off of Bonanza to the south and one off of Pecos to the north. The plan includes roughly 18% of open space, distributed between two large amenity areas and a handful of smaller retention areas throughout the development. All right, and with this PAD amendment, the applicant is requesting deviations from the previous approval. Seen here on the screen outlined in red are the requested deviations. For the SF 10 zoning, the applicant is requesting reduced front and rear setbacks. The front setback was previously approved at a staggered 25 feet to 30 feet. The LDC requires a 25-foot front setback for this district. The applicant is now proposing 15 feet for livable and 20 feet for garage. The rear setback was previously approved at 30 feet, consistent with the LDC. The applicant is proposing to reduce this to 20 feet. For the SF 15 zoning district, the applicant is proposing reduced setbacks and increased lot coverage. The previously approved front setback was a staggered 30 feet to 35 feet in line with LDC requirements of 30 feet. The applicant is proposing a 20-foot livable and 25-foot garage front setback. The previous approval and LDC required 15-foot side setbacks, and the applicant is proposing 10 feet. The previous approval also required a 35-foot rear setback where the LDC only requires 30 feet. However, the applicant is proposing 25 feet. In addition to setback deviations for SF 15, the applicant is also proposing to increase the lot coverage percentage of SF 15 from 35% to 40%. Also seen on this screen are items outlined in green. These are items that are exceeding our requirements. The minimum lot dimensions being proposed for SF 10 are 90 by 110 feet, where the LDC only requires 85 feet by 110 feet. The minimum dimensions being proposed for SF 15 are 115 by 130 feet, where the LDC only requires 110 by 120 feet. In addition, the open space recommendations for single-family communities is 10%, and the applicant is exceeding that by providing 18%. The applicant has also expressed that the homes in the community will all be single-story, which is a driving factor in the deviation requests. Staff has encouraged the applicant to develop within the development standards for the zoning district, but has requested additional documentation from the applicant as to why the deviations are necessary. In addition to these requests, the applicant would also like to pursue a potential modification to the LDC requirement of a 50-foot by 250-foot landscape area along the arterial intersection. The deviation request would be to utilize the same square footage, just in different dimensions. And then this is just an image of the preliminary plat that is running concurrently with the zoning and general plan amendment. And with that, I am seeking your input again just on the proposed deviations and any other general feedback that you have on all of the information that I just gave you. And I'm available for your questions.
Okay, thank you, Kristin. Anybody want to start with some questions or comments? Vice Chairman Fay.
Thank you, thank you, Kristin. As far as the, getting the land use squared away, the plan of it, that's, that's all, almost ought to be done administratively. That's not controversial in my mind. I do, first of all, the two-story, the one versus two-story, everything I read in the item does not guarantee one story. It all looks like they're proposing two-story.
So Chair Munt, Vice Chair Fay, that in the amendment request, along the southern and western border, they are guaranteeing single-story. The comment of the whole neighborhood being single-story was brought up in a meeting that we had within the last week. So I would have that formally included in the.
So in the next, the next time this comes forward, it will literally be obligating them to one story?
If, if that's the path that they continue on, yes.
That, that said, the, just on the topic of the deviations, I don't necessarily have a problem with that landscape buffer zone. That doesn't seem all that controversial to me. But the number of deviations make it look like this is one of those trying to pack too much into too small a place, or like we designed to figure out what's the maximum we possibly can sell, and then ask for deviations rather than designing around what's required. It starts to, yeah, the red, some of the red boxes, particularly the, the feet. It starts to look like too much packed in and too crowded. It's a gated community, so they might get a little bit different. I'm kind of getting close to, if it wasn't a gated community, I'd be kind of saying this is too much.
Mm-hmm.
It certainly gets much closer to the approvable line and having spillover effect on your neighbors than I'm comfortable with. Other than that, the rest of it is fairly straightforward to me.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Vice Chairman. Anyone else? Commissioner Davis.
Thank you, Chair. Kristen, I was kind of in the same boat where I was having concerns with the number of deviations they were asking. When you mentioned the single-story, I hadn't caught that, and I, that kind of pushed me towards supporting that because I understand that's gonna get, that's gonna create a need for lesser setbacks and the greater lot coverage. So I think that made me more comfortable. So what we're getting in exchange for the PAD, if I'm understanding it, are the larger lots, the single-story, and the increased open space?
Yes, Chairman, Commissioner Davis, that's correct.
Because initially I was like eight percent additional open space. I feel like it could have been better than that. But I, I think with the single-story addition, that justifies it a little bit more because I know that's a desired product out there, and to live in a single-story neighborhood is a desired thing. So I think based on that, I'm comfortable with it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Davis. Commissioner Anderson, I saw you.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. I guess, I mean, just the deviations, I get the, I get the reason for. They're essentially, what they're doing is just, they want to grow the building as much as they can on the lots. And the only concern I have with that is now, you know, I get that, you know, I understand that they're increasing the lot size too, but when you're reducing the, especially the front and rear setbacks by about ten feet on each side, I mean, now we're just losing a lot of like backyard space for residents to look in. And the exhibit in here, where they're kind of showing those building outlines on each lot, I mean, there's not a whole lot of outdoor area for the residents, and I just, the only concern is, is that gonna be, you know, a pleasant space for the people that are owning these homes? So I, my, you know, I guess I'd be okay with the front yard setback. Because, you know, it's just, it's just the buildings will just be close to the street, I guess. But I just have a concern on the rear yard setback that you're, you're not gonna have a whole lot of usable space back there. It's just gonna feel like a really narrow, just kind of alley back there. So other than that, I, you know, no other comments, you know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Anderson. Commissioner DeGervina?
Yeah, I don't want to, yeah, that was a good presentation. I don't want to be redundant, but I feel the same way, and I think of four of us that have the same concern. Maybe it needs to be looked at, maybe in a little bit more detail. I feel they're kind of packing a little bit too much there, too. Obviously, the averances of the setbacks are being used because they're putting a larger footprint home there. Obviously, developers like to increase the value of their development. I understand that fully, but is it the right size house? And one story is great because what people want very much, ranch-style. But is that maybe too big, maybe too compact for that? And then you only have one entrance. Is that enough, does that meet code for those seventy, I think seventy-six homes for traffic? If you're gonna have a bigger house there, you're gonna have more cars, more kids, and that kind of thing, so that'd be my only concern.
Okay, so Chairman, Commissioner DeGervina, it does meet the fire code currently just because there are two emergency access points in addition to the primary entrance. But modifications to those entrance points are part of ongoing conversations.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Gage?
Thank you, Chair. I'm very much in support of the modifying the dimensions at the intersection because I think that's crazy to begin with, but the rest of it I just can't support at this time.
Thank you. All right. Well, is there anything else that you needed input on, Kristen?
I don't believe so. It's only gone through one review so far, so we will go over this feedback with the applicant and come before you again.
All right, very good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, well, that concludes the items and moves us into item number six, which is the discussion of the regular meeting agenda. And so on the consent, we currently have two items, one of which is tabled. The signature fence modification, once again, the fence is not ready, and then the shops at Pecos in power. Was there anyone that had issues with that, that they wanted to remove it?
Not to remove it, but I suspect that takes two separate motions, one to table and one to approve consent. Is that fair? Or can we just approve tabling and?
So we could pull the tabled one off. Okay, well then we'll pull that.
Yeah, I guess we could do it either way.
See, that's why I brought in the vice chair, brought in the heavies. Thank you, sir. Okay, then on to the other agenda. We have a withdrawn one for the Melrose Presley Park parking reduction, but then we do have the site plan for it. Then a couple of everyone's favorite LDC text amendments and the signature at Santan Village. Were there any of those that anybody felt they wanted to try to move to consent?
Chair, unless anyone has a problem, I would like to move number seventeen. There is a countervailing because I know Keith doesn't want it or wants it moved to consent, which makes me want to leave it there. But in the interest of the meeting not being too long, I'd have no problem moving item seventeen to consent.
Okay, anyone else have poems with that, who really had their hearts set on hearing Keith again? No? No? Okay, and anyone in the crowd today that was here to speak on that? Okay, not seeing any. All right. Well, and then it sounds like, you know, it'll be good to hear the text amendments because I know that deals with the state and the multifamily, so it'll be good to put that on the record, so. All right, well, with that then, it sounds like we have a good established game plan, and it's five thirty-eight, so we'll be back here in twenty minutes for the meeting. Thank you.
Okay, in the interest of time, I am going to call the meeting to order and we will have our first item of business being the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand and join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Could we have a roll call, Eva?
Alternate hung. Alternate lion. Commissioner De Gravina. Commissioner Gage.
Present.
Commissioner Davis.
Here.
Commissioner Simon.
Here.
Commissioner Anderson.
Yeah.
Vice Chairman Fay.
Here.
Chairman Munt.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Okay, then we're gonna move into the approval of the agenda. And after much deliberation, we are going to move everything off of the consent. So the agenda will be items 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, and 17, all on the non-consent.
So we're leaving 17 on non-consent or not?
Oh, I'm sorry. The number 10 will stay on consent since it'll be alone, and we can then vote that. It's kind of a moot point, I guess, but we can leave it there. So we'll move 11 off and leave 10 on consent, though. Do we do a motion on that? I forgot. Yeah. Okay. Isn't that now, sir?
Chair, I'll move to approve your agenda.
Thank you.
Moving item 11 to the non-consent, leaving item 10 on consent, and the rest will stay on non-consent.
Very well. Thank you. Commissioner Simon, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by the vice chair. Please cast your vote. Motion carries seven zero. Okay, now we'll go on to the communications. Communications from citizens. At this time, members of the public may comment on matters within the jurisdiction of the town. The commission may not discuss items that are not specifically identified on the agenda. Therefore, pursuant to state law, action taken as a result of public comment will be limited to directing staff to study the matter, responding to any criticism, or scheduling the matter for further consideration. So this would be if anyone is here to speak on items not on the agenda. Is there anyone? I don't have any cards, so I don't believe so, but is there anyone here that wished to speak on something not on the agenda? Not seeing any, we will move on to item number nine and the report from council liaison on current events. Council member Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The only thing I have is a reminder that Gilbert Days is November 22nd and 23rd. Please feel free to come down and take part in that.
Very well. Thank you, sir. Yes, I think that'll be a great time. Oh, well, we can get into that during our comments. He was asking if you'll still be our guy when the new election is out.
That's yet to be determined.
All right, thank you, sir. Okay, now we'll move into the public hearing consent. All items listed below are considered public hearing consent calendar. The commission may by a single motion approve any number of items where after opening the public hearing, no person requests the item to be removed from consent calendar. If such a request is made, the commission may then withdraw the item from the public hearing consent calendar for the purpose of public discussion and separate action. Other items on the agenda may be added to the consent calendar and approved under a single motion. So currently, the consent agenda is solely item number 10, UP 24-43, signature at Santan Village fence modification, and it is a motion that will be tabling this item.
Commissioner, or Chairman Munt, I move to table item 11, item 10, UP 2443.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the consent. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right, we have Commissioner Davis on the second. Please cast your vote. Motion carries seven zero. On to the public hearing, non-consent. Public hearing items will be heard at an individual public hearing and will be acted upon by the commission by a separate motion during the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in support or in opposition to a public hearing item may do so. If you do wish to comment on a public hearing item, you must fill out a yellow comment card indicating the item number on which you wish to be heard. Once the hearing is closed, there will be no further public comment unless requested by a member of the commission. So, being that we moved item number 11, we'll start with that. DR 24-12, Shops at Pecos and Power, and Mr. Keith Newman.
Chair Munt, members of the commission, my first item tonight on the public hearing agenda is for the Shops at Pecos and Power. Shops at Pecos and Power is, as you remember, I brought it to you last month as a study session item. This project is located at the southwest corner of Power and Pecos roads, and you can see it highlighted on the screen there in front of you. It's currently a vacant lot. And then you can see on the site, some of the site improvements around it have already been completed. You can see there's sidewalks, curb and sidewalks, and then a few entrances already. And then it's surrounded by a car wash to the south, and then also to the south is also a, in child learning preschool. The request before you tonight is for a design review, for the applicant to develop a 6,500-square-foot commercial building on a phase, in a phase-one pad. This is a phased development. It'll be two phases. And then also establish a master site plan over a, the larger portion of the parcel, which is four and a half acres in total size. So discussing the site plan with you, before I get into this site plan and the details, I wanted to mention that there was a typo in the staff report. I failed to update some of the items from the study session report. The one thing I wanted to correct is the overall size of the square footage of all of the buildings has been reduced from 25,000 square feet to about 22,000 square feet, a little bit under that. And the Shop C building in the far southern boundary, that, in the staff report, it says that that building is 10,400 square feet. The applicant has reduced that building to 7,400 square feet, or 7,500 square feet, excuse me, to accommodate some additional parking spaces to the east of it. So I just wanted to mention that before I go too much further and mention some of my type, my errors in the staff report. So the site as a whole, like I said, is a part of a master site plan. It's four and a half acres in size. 21,950 square feet of building area, and you have five separate buildings. Use phase one is a 6,500-square-foot building, and you can see it in the top left-hand corner. That's the Shops B building. That is phase one. And as of right now, that's, there's a dentist that's going to go in there, and then there's also a small suite to the far west side of the buil, east, excuse me, east side of the building, which we, I don't believe there's a user for that yet. The others, the other buildings that are in the master site plan in phase two are Shop C down at the bottom on the southern boundary. You have Pad A, B, and Pad C as well, and you can see those on this, on there as well in that site plan. There is a total of 30 parking spaces in phase one for the, for that Shops B building, and then there will be approximately 118 parking spaces total for the entire master plan. And I wanted to impress upon you that this master plan, being in the shopping center zoning district, is, they can have shared parking, and they, the parking ratio is one per 200 square feet, one space per 200 square feet. So they meet, based on the building square footages, they meet all the parking requirements for the whole entire master plan, and the dentist office or Shops B meets its parking as well. as well. And so the access for the site is, you can see, there's two access points off of Power Road. Both curb cuts are existing. The access, the easternmost access, is a temp, right now, the curb is there, the opening is there, the driveway, but it will be an emergency-only access until Phase 2 is constructed, and it will be a DG surface for emergency purposes only, and will have a gate that will have a Knox lock on it that will only be used in the event of an emergency. And the third access is along Power Road, and it is an existing access point that's shared with the car wash. Before I move on to the next slide, I wanted to bring up the, just a few items of concern that were mentioned and commented on by you as planning commissioners at the previous study session last month. One of the concerns being the Pad C building at the corner. It was mentioned that that site, they wanted, some commissioners had commented that they wanted that site to be redesigned, to have a different use on it. And according to the applicant, after that meeting, we had a lot of discussions with the applicant, several meetings, and we didn't mention this at the study session, it just didn't come up, but there is an SRP easement that is 120 feet wide, that takes up that whole corner, and you can see on the screen in front of you in that tan color, I'm outlining the easement, 120 feet wide. And according to the applicant, the reason that they have designed a, this, it looks like a vehicle services-type shop, like a lube shop, is because of that SRP easement, they didn't have a lot of flexibility in the size of the building and the location of the building, and they felt this was one of the only uses that is feasible on that portion of the property, given the restrictions based on the SRP easement. So under that easement, they are only requesting or proposing parking under the easement area. Now, given that parking, the applicant will probably go into more detail on this, but there is, that when the easement was negotiated with SRP, the applicant, who, the attorney for the project, Mr. Paul Gilbert, was the one who negotiated this easement, and in the easement document, it states that parking can be within the easement if SRP approves it. The applicant is still in the process of trying to obtain that approval from SRP. We have a condition of approval in the staff report that addresses this design in conjunction with that easement. The condition states that Phase 2, with the first, the construction of the first building in Phase 2, and the DR case that will be associated with any of the buildings that's built in Phase 2, they will not be able to receive approval of any part of Phase 2, any design review case in Phase 2, unless they have written approval or consent from SRP to park within that easement area. So that is kind of the explanation of that SRP easement in a nutshell. And as you will see on this landscape plan, due to the fact that that area is within an SRP easement, there are a lot of restrictions on plant materials and trees that can be placed at that corner. There is a large power pole, I wish I had a laser pointer, I could show it to you, but there is a large power pole along that northern boundary close to Pecos Road, and it's a very large power pole, and there is a power pole setup area. You can't have trees within a certain distance of the pole, so that's why you don't see any trees near, on that northern portion of the parking lot there, along Pecos Road. And then there are less restrictions in areas where there is no pole, and then they are only allowed to have certain types of trees that SRP approves. But that whole SRP easement area must be maintained in an open state so that SRP can drive their large trucks and maintenance vehicles in that area to service the power lines. Okay, I can show you where that pole is now. Thank you. So you can see my laser pointer? That pole is right here, my hands are very shaky. I get that from my mother, I apologize. So right here is that power pole. There aren't any other power poles, they're further down the line and further up the line, but these are 230 KV power lines. They're actually the largest lines that you will see out in any given community, except like right next to the power plant. So they're very large lines, and they were put in, I believe they were put in, finished in like April of this year, I believe. So that is the SRP easement situation. So as far as the rest of the landscaping in the site, the applicant will be installing, and I'll go back to the laser pointer for you. They will be installing landscaping along Pecos Road for Phase 1, along the western boundary in Phase 1, and also, all the way down to the southern boundary, just trees in this Phase 2 area. And that is to provide screening for the residents that live in these homes here, so that the trees can grow and that they can have a little bit of a buffer and visual protection from a potential building. And then the rest of the landscaping in Phase 2, along Pecos and Power Roads and along this southern boundary, will be installed when the first building comes, or the first building permit comes forward for approval in the future. The elevations, approximately 19 feet tall to the roofline of the building. The building is, it's a flat-roofed building, a lot of good materials, there's smooth-faced stucco, metal siding, and also masonry veneer, and the colors are earth-toned colors, so it's a, we worked with the applicant quite a bit on these elevations and felt they did a good job on these elevations. I'll just show you the other ones here. The north elevation's going to be where the main entrance is. As far as public participation is concerned, staff has not received any comments from surrounding property owners or residents regarding the request. So staff recommends that you approve this project tonight with the, subject to the conditions. And also, I just wanted to make note that, I spoke with the applicant earlier today, and there is condition number five. We thought it was, applicant felt it was a little unclear, and wanted to add the word "in Phase 2" at the end, that the landscape within Phase 2 along Pecos and Power Roads be constructed in Phase 2 with the construction of the first building. Just clarify it, just clean it up a little bit. So that concludes my portion of the presentation. The applicant is here tonight, and they have a presentation, I believe. We have Paul Gilbert, and we also have Randy Haslett. They have a presentation, so I'm done. If you want to allow them to present at this time, that would be fantastic, or you can ask me questions first.
Okay. If nobody has anything right now, we can just move, or wait, Mr. Anderson.
Yeah, actually, I have a question that you'll probably be able to answer, but I'd like to ask it before the applicant comes up, because they might be able to clear some stuff up as well. In the staff report, can you go to the county map, the aerial?
Yeah. See if it'll work. Okay, here we go.
And then, do you have that pointer?
Yeah.
Can I have that back, please? Yeah. Thank you. So during your, I, well, let me just start off. I support the project. I think it's, I think it's fine. I don't really have issues with it. During your presentation, I just, there was a couple of things you said that just kind of throw me off, and I'd like to see some clarification. So you said, on the site plan, that there's a, you know, we got that SRP easement cutting through the site here, and you said that there's a big power pole approximately in that location right there.
Uh huh.
I'm not seeing a power pole there. I see a tree, and then, if there was a big power pole there, you would see some sort of shadow line, just like you do down here with these guys. So I'm just a little, would like some clarification, is there really a big power pole there?
Yeah.
And the SRP easement, it looks like it's cutting through here, and then it cuts across Power and would continue on and cut through this building. So is the SRP easement an active easement, or have these guys abandoned the easement? I mean, I, like I said, I support the project, I'm fine with the layout and everything, I just want some clarification about this easement, and if there is in fact really a power pole at that location, because the aerial is not showing it, and the image that you have here is a, like, it looks like it's a 2023 image that you have there.
Chairman Munt, Commissioner Anderson, very, very good questions. So, the aerial, somehow, this aerial is, like you said, it's 2023. The power lines and the pole were just installed earlier this year, so that was, they were installed after this aerial photo was taken. So if you drive out there, you will see that huge pole and those lines, and if you, and the pole and the lines do follow the railroad tracks as they head southeast along the southern side of the railroad tracks, and they actually are north of that U-Haul facility, right in that big space, you can see that space. They continue far to the southeast, and then eventually, they start curving back more true east, as it gets more towards like into the town of Queen Creek. So, but, but yes, they do follow the railroad tracks, and the pole is there, and they were installed earlier this year, so that's why you don't see them in the aerial.
Okay, thank you for clearing that up. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Okay.
And, and sorry, if I may mention real quick, Chairman Munt, I apologize. Paul Gilbert, I think he has pictures in his presentation. He'll show you those amazing power poles.
But wait, there's more. Okay, well, let's bring him up then. Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Simon.
I, just a quick question, are we approving the site plan for the entire site, or are we just looking at the, a, the first phase?
Chairman, Commissioner Simon, good question. So, it's kind of a twofold approval. You're approving the master site plan, the four and a half acres and the conceptual design in Phase 2, and you're approving Phase 1, which is the Shops B design, including the building elevations. So it's kind of, it's kind of a twofold approval. Design review for Phase 1 and master site plan for the whole entire development. Is that, did I explain that right?
Yep, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, now we can move on. Thank you very much, Keith.
You're welcome.
And the applicant may approach, and hit the button at the base of the microphone, and you'll see it go red when it's live.
Thank you. For your record, my name is Paul Gilbert, 701 North 44th Street in Phoenix. I'm here representing the property owner, and we also have with us Dr. Goodman. Will you please stand so they know who you are? He doesn't look like it, but he's a dentist, and it's his facility that we're trying to get approved tonight. Randy is also with, here to help me. Trying to be respectful of everyone's time.
This one works.
Okay, good. I was here for your prior meeting, and I've also reviewed the minutes. Maybe I'm being naive and a bit presumptuous, but I don't think anybody had any problems with Phase 1 that contains the dental office. If that's the case, and I'm asking that respectfully, I plan on not saying anything about Phase 1. But if you do have problems or want discussion on Phase 1, then you get to hear from my colleague Randy tonight.
Okay, does anyone want to speak on, Commissioner Davis?
Chair, since I'm the one that pulled it, I think I can speak for the fact that I don't have any concerns with Phase 1. I don't want to delay that in any way, but I do want to talk about the Phase 2 and the hard corner and the SRP easement, so.
Okay.
And I'd like to talk about the not installing the landscape associated with Phase 1 until Phase 2, and I don't know, we can add that till later.
I don't know if Phase 2 can count.
Okay.
Okay, we'll dispense with talking about Phase 1, and go to the presentation where we'll focus on Phase 2. Thank you. Here's the current aerial of our site at the southwest corner of Pecos and Power. As we will illustrate to you, the specific intersection is heavily, emphasized heavily encumbered by a multitude of easements and infrastructure that supports and justifies the location of the automotive uses we're proposing. And it was the automotive uses that I felt you had some concerns about, so we're going to address that in detail in this presentation. Next slide. Oh, no, that looks like this. Sorry, keep going. Good help's hard to find here. Let me see if I can.
All right, that's the one. That's it.
Okay, yeah, you got it. Thank you. All right, for context, and I'm gonna spend some time tonight on the context, because I think it's very important and really strongly vindicates the uses that we're proposing here. So, we're on, right on the edge of Gilbert. Gilbert controls everything west of Power Road, whereas the city of Mesa and the town of Queen Creek control development east of Power Road. Next slide. So, here are some of the immediate adjacent uses. First of all, to our south, and on this project is a supercar, superstar car wash at the southeast corner. You want to point that out with your?
I don't have it.
Oh, yeah. I think that's a pointer.
They can see it.
Okay, they may, all right. Then, there's an approved Platinum Paint and Body Shop, currently under construction at the northeast corner. So you got a superstar car wash, you got the Platinum Paint and Body Shop immediately across the street, then you have a U-Haul storage facility at the southeast corner, and at the northeast corner of the intersection, it's entirely controlled by the Flood Control District of Maricopa County. Basically, with the exception of the Flood Control District of Maricopa County, all, every one of these uses is an auto-centric use. So we're not introducing anything that isn't already there by way of generic uses. Next slide. The intersection also has some significant infrastructure running through it. I'm gonna basically go through this. We have the Southern Pacific Railroad cutting diagonally through the middle of the intersection. We have a major 230-foot KV SRPI, SRP, excuse me, a lot of pressure up here tonight, Mr. Chairman, sorry. Major 230 KV SRP high-voltage line, and that line is, in addition to the 69 KV SRP transmission line, that both run parable to the railroad line. So you've got, and by the way, I have been to the site, Commissioner Anderson, and can vouch that that voltage line, that pole is there in all its spectacular glory. It's a big one. Then, in fact, the high-voltage 230-foot, or 230 KV voltage line actually cuts across the northeast corner of our property. The presence of the railroad line also includes some significant rail crossings, infrastructure across both streets, so you have gates and lights in connection with the railroad. My bottom line, what I'm trying to establish here, is this is a very, very intensive corner, and makes the development of this site very challenging. So, all this infrastructure has resulted in some significant easements across the intersection. These easements total 400 feet, and Randy's showing you where that 400-feet area is, in width, to accommodate the infrastructure that runs through this intersection. This is inclusive of 120-foot-wide, high-voltage easement that consumes the northeast portion of our site for the conveyance of the 230 KV line. This entire 120-foot-wide easement with the SRP has to be drivable for Salt River Project trucks. Don't want to appear presumptuous, but I actually handled the negotiation when we Don't want to appear presumptuous, but I actually handled the negotiation when we sold this to SRP. I'm very familiar with the details of the easement. I can talk about it in more detail later on. But basically, we have to preserve this for the SRP trucks and maintenance vehicles. Basically, we are restricted by this easement to only some minor landscaping and we are allowed parking. Now, one of the stipulations tonight is we don't have sign off from the SRP. Unfortunately, we didn't, apparently, we didn't get that submitted soon enough, but it has been submitted and we're waiting for their reply. But the reason we can agree to the stipulation that says we won't pull a permit on phase two is that the easement, again, which I negotiated specifically allows for landscaping, minimum trees and trucks, or parking. But, we have to have sign off from SRP as to the location of the parking and the landscaping. So, we're allowed to have it, but we need to get their approval. So, we've agreed to a stipulation that says we won't pull a permit on phase two until we have that from the Salt River Project. We have met with the, uh, your city attorney, town attorney's office and also with your staff, and they are in agreement with that stipulation. We carefully met with them, negotiated the wording, so it has their approval. Then, uh, so, we are very limited into what we can put in this 120-foot wide easement. Basically, the only viable use of this easement will be parking and landscaping. Next slide. Now, I want you to take a look at what this intersection looks like. If you haven't had a chance to visit it, it's quite a sight. Uh, here are some photos that exemplify what has been created at this intersection today. So, you can see the massive high voltage lines and the hundred-plus-foot pole running across our site. You can also see how these high voltage lines and the Southern Pacific Railroad consume an enormous portion of the northwest and southeast corner of the intersection. You can also see the clutter of the railroad crossing, the arms and the signs and so on. All that is illustrated and shown in the photos. So, uh, and you can also see the adjacent developments that are similar, all oriented for automobile uses. So, what we're proposing then is consistent with the uses that exist there now. So, now looking back to our master plan and how it fits with these existing encumbrances that affect the site. Hopefully, I have demonstrated empirically that this is a very challenging site to develop. So, we have to set back any building near the hard corner, back beyond the 120-foot wide high voltage easement. We have done that. Because of this major limitation on the site, the only use of the land is for parking and drive aisles and landscaping. The proposed automotive uses at this corner are also very compatible and highly compatible in relation to the immediately adjacent uses. I repeat again, supercar, star car wash, uh, platinum paint and body shop and the U-Haul storage facility, next. The final point that I want to make is that we have another limitation on this site, which again adds to the problematic difficulties of making this site developable. The, uh, hard corner created by the high voltage easement is the existing curb cut along Power Road that also services the superstar car wash. So, there you see in red, that's the entryway to the supercar star wash. And, we have to extend this driveway from the curb cut across the site, which is in combination with a restrictive high voltage easement, creates a very awkward triangle area. Triangle area, okay, thank you. So, there's only about 50 to 60 feet between the driveway and the southern corner of the easement where the lube shop is proposed. We don't have much of an opportunity to put much else in that very limited triangular space. So, we submit that given these encumbrances, the only real viable design on this site, and particularly this hard corner, is what we are proposing before you tonight. Hopefully, that will give you a better appreciation and an understanding of the challenges of the site and why we have the uses that we do in this location. That concludes my, finally, thank you for your patience, Mr. Chairman. I think I saw a yawn on some of your members up there. It wasn't you, of course, but.
That was clearly from allergies or something, sir. Don't worry. Commissioner Davis, did you want to address your concerns?
Um, Mr. Gilbert, uh, the question, one of the questions that I have is related to the landscaping that is shown on the site plan on the east side and at the corner. The landscaping on the east side is in that easement. What's the likelihood that those, those trees are actually going to get approved by SRP? I guess my experience with them is trees in those easements are a no-go. So, is there something in the agreement? I know they still have final approval in that they can decide what they want, but what's your comfort level that that would happen?
The agreement says we can have landscaping and we can have parking. The only restriction is they get to approve its location. So, we've submitted it to them and doesn't matter what we want to do, we have to comport with what SRP requires, and that's part of what we negotiated with them when we sold the easement to them. So, we feel pretty comfortable that we can come back with something very close to what you're seeing here because it specifically says we get parking and landscaping in the easement. They just get to approve the location.
Okay. In my experience, landscaping doesn't necessarily mean trees to SRP. So, I guess, I don't know that I'm convinced that trees are going to be allowed.
I'm sorry, we, in that corner, we don't have trees.
It, only in the SRP easement, we are not allowed to have any trees. We can have shrubs, but outside of the easement, um, let me see if I can show you on the site plan.
The landscape plan I've got shows trees on the east side.
Yes, on the triangle side. We're, we're going to put trees, anywhere there's not an SRP easement, we will put as many trees as we can.
Yeah.
Okay, that doesn't match the landscape plan in my packet. My packet shows there's trees on that east side and on the corner? And I don't believe those trees will happen.
What Keith showed you earlier is not the latest and greatest.
Okay, so there.
Yeah, we went back to SRP and relooked at their guidelines, no trees in the easement. We will have trees on the corner where the curb cut is on both Pecos and Power Road and at the hard corner, there's like five or six trees on the new plan. Or I could, I could get that to you.
But those trees are all outside the Salt River Project easement.
Okay, that sounds more likely. Um, and then those ones on the hard corner, the site visibility triangles of all transportation's good with those trees, has that been vetted out?
Not yet, not yet. But we, we would obviously go through site planning, uh, through, with staff and get those site triangles verified.
We know that's a requirement and we'll comply with it.
Yeah.
Okay. I just wanted those clarifications, I guess. I don't know if you want me to get into any of my thoughts on this yet or if you, that's all I, that's what I wanted to clarify from.
Thank you, good question.
From the applicant.
Chairman.
Keith, please.
Commissioner Davis, if I may. The phase two area, uh, on that, far in that hard, way up in that northeast corner where it does show a few trees in the, in that 50 by 250 landscape setback, um, and, and the area in the SRP easement, those will come, um, back for final approval at some point during one of the, probably the DR cases right around in that, on the corner, somewhere right in that area at, at another time. The landscape plan you see now is more of a, just a conceptual type of landscape plan, but we'll finalize that in future DR cases, the exact location of all the trees and everything. We'll, we'll finalize that at those times.
Were there other mitigation efforts looked at when you're putting a building with bay doors right at that corner and all of that, you know, it's not even just parking, it's like a large manu, area for maneuvering that's just without any kind of landscape buffer or any kind of screen walls or anything to kind of buffer those bay doors from that intersection? If that's the type of use that ends up at that corner?
Chairman, Commissioner Davis, I, I would defer to the applicant for, for, for that question.
Yeah, bay doors and drive-throughs all require screen walls, you're correct, but because of the easement, we cannot put any of those items in that area. So, there is no, no way to mitigate the doors of the overhead. And also, the overhead doors on the lube most of the time would be open, it seems like, on a shop like that.
So, that raises another question. Will there not then be screen walls to screen the parking along Power or Pecos like there typically would be?
No, we would be, only be able to provide, um, mature shrubs at the time, at that time.
Because that would be in the Salt River Project easement.
Exactly.
Okay, hold on a second, but this is the Salt River easement that you sold them, right?
Yes.
You sold them the thing that now prevents you in, in theory from developing part of this property.
Well, it's, uh, that connotes, Commissioner, that we had a choice. They filed a condemnation action, so we didn't go out and solicit this. We didn't want to sell it to them, but they filed a condemnation action, they had the right to condemn the property. So, basically, yeah, we sold it to them instead of going through the lawsuit, but they filed the condemnation action, so that's why. We, we, I hope you understand, we didn't have a choice on that.
No, I do, but then that starts to look like a constructive condemnation of where you want to put the, the lube shop.
I'm sorry, enlighten me if you would, sir, on the point there, I'm not following it.
If you condemn something that prevents you from using something else, the, the additional effect is called a constructive condemnation. I may only be condemning one little piece, but if it prevents you from getting access or, or you're using another piece, that second piece is called a constructive condemnation. They'd have to pay you fair market value, both for the piece they literally condemn and for the piece that they effectively prevent you from using.
I think the term you're referencing is severance damages, and that is true.
Okay, fair enough, in my, we.
It doesn't matter, I, I understand that what you're saying.
Sorry, that, that suddenly, the more we talked about, the more it's gotten a little bit problematic. I, some of the, the screen walls, the, 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 the normal aesthetics we require are, the easement is the thing that's preventing all of them and, I don't know, it's, it's not as necessarily big a limitation as I, I think it used to be when I was first reading this. Sorry if I'm interrupting your, your point.
No, you're, you're fine. And I don't know if you want me to get into discussion with what some of my thoughts are on this yet or not, Chair.
I would love, I'd love to get them.
Well, we'll have to eventually bring it up here.
So, bring it up.
I mean, if.
I feel like.
Well, do you want any more questions of the applicant prior to me closing public comment is what I'm asking.
I don't think I have more questions. I just want to let them know where I'm at on it.
Sounds like you might have some discussion within them. So, okay, if you want to just state what you have and then we can at least let them have a chance to.
I think where I'm at is, it's a bad situation. It's not a great, um, it's a very harsh corner. It is an entry into our town, um, so it's unfortunate that it's, we're welcomed with this easement and the train tracks and a lot of automotive uses. I feel like we're making a bad situation worse and I feel like maybe this site just is a little too much on it. Maybe it's not appropriate to have that additional use at the corner and maybe pad B could be something a little bit bigger, um, and grow that instead of squeezing that extra pad in there in that little triangle. It just feels like it's being forced. And then you have this harsh situation at the intersection. You are not going to get adequate landscaping to screen it, then you have this, the parking, no screen walls, a sea of asphalt there and bay doors into a small building that, I, it just feels, like I said, like we're making a bad situation worse and that it's not appropriate coming, you know, at this corner is kind of where I'm landing on it. So, yeah, I have, but I do not have issues with shops B and I, I hate that they're tied together. I wish that they were separated, um, because I don't have any issues with that. I don't want to hold up the dentist, I forget his name. But, I do have concerns with that corner. I just feel like it's poor site planning and it's, we're wedging something in here that's not doing anything for our town. It's not, you know, good site planning. So, that's where I'm at.
Well, our.
You can respond to that since I haven't closed it. Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioner Davis, we, we're struggling with developing this corner. It's, you've acknowledged it's a difficult corner to develop. And, in order to make it work, we've got to have certain uses on there and, um, I, I, I want to say this delicately, but you were allowed these uses as a matter of right, that's what it's owned for. So, we can have these uses. You can control the aesthetics and we're very open to that. We, if you have any suggestions on how we can do that, we'll do that. But as far as the uses go, and I sound like a tough guy up here, which is not my style, we are allowed those uses as a matter of right.
And I, I agree with you on that. I, I understand it's an allowable use. I just feel like those bay doors and the, and all of that asphalt is what I'm trying to mitigate. So, it's not necessarily the use, it's this design of the building with those bay doors facing the intersection. And I get these little buildings, that's what they are, is they're bay doors and they're open all day and you see into them and it, it just feels like this is not the best spot for that use on this site plan. I'm not opposed to it being on this site. I just, at that intersection, I feel like, you know, could a landscape island extend out there, but then SRP's not going to allow any trees in it? So, then, we just have this, it just, it feels forced and that's my struggle. So, I don't know that the rest of the commission feels that way, that's just where I'm at, so.
Randy, can we do anything to put landscaping there to mitigate those?
I work for both the landowner and for Dr. Goodman, so I'm in a hard position. This is the plan that the landowner would like to do and it is as used to, for, for this building. Uh, we can try to come up with something. If you're afraid of the sea of asphalt, we could possibly reduce the amount of asphalt and kind of maybe angle, uh, perhaps maybe this corner, um, some more. Uh, we could provide more lush vegetation as much as we can on the hard corner to shield the bay doors. To be honest, I think the bay doors these days are not really bad in eyesore. They're, they call them jiffy loop doors, they've got frosted glass on them, the, um, you know, you guys are going to have a, a chance to look at the DR for the design of that building. And to be honest, the, the eyesore of this, of the whole thing is the, the train tracks and the gates and the high voltage. And this is an industrial area. It just is, and I'm sorry that it's not very aesthetically pleasing, uh, but you know, this is the hand we were dealt with and, you know, doing the condemnation act, we were trying to make the best out of the situation and not just have them take our land and say, okay, well, can we at least do parking and can we at least do, you know, whatever, you know, we'll try to make this site plant work. The owner of this land has owned this land for over 15 years and has yet to got, Mr. Goodman is the first tenant, that he's got to start phasing this thing. And I think that's what the city wants, is this to be phased and developed and it'll promote small businesses. So, um, I, we can try to work with staff on some other options here, um, but I, you know, I, like I said, I work for the, the landowner and this is, um, this is a use that is actually, you know, it's, it's, it's good for everybody. I mean, it's, so.
And I appreciate.
It's no different than the other autocentric uses that are already around. We're right across the street from a superstar car wash, right across the street, we have a body shop and the U-Haul facility across the street.
And I don't know that I was part of any of those reviews, so I, I understand. Can I ask a question about the bay doors? And maybe this, I just don't have a ton of familiarity with whether or not those bay doors, because I understand they are way nicer nowadays and we see, or I, I get all of that. Are they open during the day in between? Is this, I assume they're just open all day long while they're functioning?
Most of the lube shops I've been to, yes. Bay doors are pretty much open, they have EVAP cooling for the people in there and they don't open them and close them, uh, during transitions at all. So, they're mostly open.
And I do appreciate the situation. I just wanted to better understand it. I still. And I do appreciate the situation. I just wanted to better understand it. I still, I do have concerns. I do feel like we're making a bad situation worse. If there's things you can do with the building, maybe the building wings up a little more to screen it a little better from the street, just those kind of things when you come in for design review, I would like looked at or-
Would any kind of temporary fencing, Paul, you think be allowed with SRP? Something they can move or push over possibly?
I'll let you work out the stuff. And again, this is just my, I don't know that the rest of the commissioners have these same concerns. So I just wanted to let you-
Yeah, you know, and actually, in the interest of, you know, keeping things on track, I think that, oh, we'll just let this come up for our discussion so that we don't, I don't know if beat a dead horse is a term that's allowable in a public meeting, but we don't do that. And so just with that, though, is there any other questions that you want of staff or the applicant? Okay, Commissioner DeGronina?
I just got a couple of quick ones. Obviously, that's an aerial easement. So there's parking below. Is there going to be parking restrictions so the SRP big trucks could get in there? Or is it completely open?
It, we are required to have drive aisles for the SRP truck.
So there's limited, there's restricted parking there?
That's correct. Yes.
And the second thing to maybe Commissioner Davis is concerned, can you flip that building, move it a little bit more forward and have entrance from the back so we don't see those bay doors?
Unfortunately, on the lube shop, you need quite a bit of stacking if they do get busy. And that would push that north, and that wouldn't, we'd actually have stacking into the drive aisle, which would not be good.
Well, either way, they have to get in there. So if you moved it more forward and-
So the entrance, the entrance to the lube, you would come in through, say, Power or Pecos, you would do a U-turn and come in here and exit out this way.
Obviously, you know the site better than I do. So I just thought that was a suggestion.
There's lube doors on both sides.
Okay. That's, I just, a couple of quick ones.
Okay. And Vice Chair, did you have?
I think it's probably more for Keith. But the, I don't know if it's a stipulation or an agreement, that they wouldn't do the landscaping until Phase Two? So they wouldn't do the Phase One landscaping with Phase One? Is that what I understood?
I can answer that. Pardon me for being a bit presumptuous here, Commissioner. No, we'll do all the landscaping for Phase One. We're not asking for any postponement of that.
Okay. So, yeah, that's usually what I was getting, it sounds like we weren't getting paid upfront. So is that, did I misunderstand that?
No, no. Chairman, Vice Chair Fay, Mr. Gilbert's correct. All the landscaping in Phase One will be installed with the construction of the Shops B building.
Okay. Okay. I don't-
And the rest of it will be deferred till Phase Two construction.
Oh, so we won't do the entire site phase?
No.
We'll just do it by phase?
Yeah, we'll do it by phase.
I didn't even know you needed a stipulation for that. Okay. Very well. Any other questions? Yeah, Commissioner Anderson.
Just a comment. I know, so at the last hearing, I think it was kind of suggested or wanted that, you know, see if we could get Shop C to get, like, swap those, Shop C with Shop B and, or Pad B and Pad C. So, I mean, just kind of visually, you know, looking at this guy, I mean, is there an opportunity where it just sits in here like that? I mean, it's good that you can use all this area for parking. If this building was to shift in here and get right along that easement line, it looks like it might fit. I mean, you might have to shave five feet or something off of it, and they could park around that. And you have a little, you know, say, if you corner this off, you can have a little seating area here, depending on, you know, what moves into this, into this building. Then it looks like there's plenty of room where these guys could probably get reconfigured back in that corner. Is that, has anybody explored that idea?
Currently, Pad B is a drive-through building, which is a high-use and high-visibility tenant that we'd like to keep on the hard corner.
Okay.
And Shops B would probably be more likely a, maybe a mixed-use building or perhaps offices, which wouldn't need the visibility from the street.
Okay.
So that's why we've kind of kept our position and our design the way that we have.
Okay.
Good answer. Okay, anyone else? All right. Thank you, gentlemen.
May I make just one other comment?
For sure.
I know you've heard enough of me already. Thank you for your patience again, Mr. Chairman. But we're very willing to come back. I know normally these are done at just the staff level, but we're willing to come back on Phase Two and work with you on the design. So we're very willing to do that.
Very well. Yeah, thank you, sir. That's, that's something we can, we'll bring that up and discuss. I appreciate all the input. And I don't believe we have any other people that wishes to speak on this item. Does anyone there want to? Okay. Well, then I'll close the public comment. Thanks, gentlemen.
Thank you.
And we'll bring it up to the dais for further discussion or a motion. I feel like we've had some discussion. Commissioner Gage?
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to say that I, I think this is a very ugly intersection. And I have some compassion for you regarding this SRP easement, because I've had them on my projects before, and they make things really difficult. So I understand what you're working with, and I'm fine with what you're trying to do here. I think something is better than nothing, and really, nothing that you could do could improve what this intersection looked like anyways.
Okay, any other comments? Commissioner Simon?
So I have no problems with Shops B at all, or that, that area. I appreciate that we were able to go through the SRP easement this time, because I did have issue with how far off that corner all the buildings sat. I felt like it was kind of a waste of space, and now it makes a little bit more sense to me. I would agree with Commissioner Gage that this is kind of an ugly corner with a lot of things happening, and I feel for the applicant in this situation. My one issue, if I had one, would be that Shop C, I just feel like with the development of Shops B and not going into the rest of the development right away, this could sit empty for quite a while. So we have kind of a scab as it looks. As far as, as far as the Pad C, I mean, I do struggle with that, but I understand what you're saying. I don't, I don't know that there's any way of getting around it. I'd like to see some way of manipulating maybe those two buildings into one. But from a use, I get that. I mean, I, I don't have the issue with the use whatsoever. It's just more how it's laid out. But I don't know that I have an overall issue with this now that, that I understand more about the SRP easement on this property. So.
Thank you, Commissioner Simon. Well, I'll just put in my input. And that's honestly that I have absolutely zero problem with the Pad C as it is. Not that I don't value everybody's position, but the idea that at this intersection with million-pound trains pouring through it at any given moment, that someone's going to be like, oh, no, there's a lube shop, to me is, it's a little bit, it's a little bit over the top for me to worry about. And I also defer to the fact that although there is an easement, although it was sold, we could discuss the merits of whether or not they could have pushed harder on a utility. But when you have a utility easement running next to a railroad, anyone here who's ever done development, you don't have a lot of wiggle room. You're kind of told, here's what it is. Smile and head out the door. So, you know, as it stands, you know, and that was part of my reason that I thought it'd be a good idea to bring it up, I have, because, you know, in these oil shops, outside of somebody trying to sell you on an air filter that you don't need, I don't think there's honestly that much noise, especially compared to trains pouring through. So that's just my opinion, and I just wanted to at least share that, as we've had, you know, a lot of discussion on it. So anyone else? Or does anyone want to make a motion?
I'll go ahead and make the motion. A motion that we approve, DR 24-12.
All right, we have a motion on the table from Commissioner Anderson. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second from Commissioner Gage. Any discussion prior to the vote? No? Okay. Please cast your vote. Motion carries six, one. Okay. Thank you very much. All right. Moving right along, we will go to item number 12, that will likely be slightly faster, given that it was withdrawn. Is that something that I need to motion on, Elena? Okay. It's gone.
My apologies. I believe it's just gone here.
I just, you know, it was one of those kind of clerical things. I wasn't sure. So, okay, on to number 13, then. We are going to hear DR 23-155, Melrose Professional Park, and once again, Keith Newman.
All right. Got to turn on the microphone. That might help. Chairman, members of the commission, once again, I'm back before you. This time with Melrose Professional Park. I'll try to make this one quick. Do I have the right clicker? Don't know if I do. Hold on. There's two of them. Excellent. I'm good now. The Melrose Professional Park project is about 14 and a half acres in size, and it is located south of the Gilbert Mercy Hospital at the southeast corner of Melrose Street and Rome Street. And you can see it right there. It's this nice, I guess, upside-down L or a seven, if you want to call it, shaped parcel. Request before you decide for a design review approval to develop a medical office park with about 114,000 square feet of building space, all single-story medical office buildings. As I stated, 14 and a half acre site. The site is zoned, has two zoning designations, kind of splits the property. You have general office zoning and neighborhood office zoning. There, as I stated, 114,000 square foot of total building space, 587 parking spaces. The applicant does have a concurrent AUP in with us that we are almost done reviewing that is requesting a 23% reduction in the required parking spaces, stall numbers. The site is accessed off of Melrose Streets and off of Coronado Street, which ends up going from Rome all the way out to Jermaine. There are three access points, one off of Coronado. You can see it there on the site plan in front of you on that north. It looks like it's north, but it's actually the east side. And then there's one off of Melrose. And then there's also another access point off of Rome. All the parking, except for that one, in the far north, kind of northeast corner, is behind the buildings, not right up on along the street frontage. Of course, the buildings have been placed along the street frontage to make it more aesthetically pleasing as the public drives down those two street frontages. The actual parking for the site, they were required to originally have 761 spaces, and they are now proposing 587 spaces, which is a 23% reduction in parking. And like I state, and staff does support that. And like I stated, we are in the process of finalizing right now the AUP for that. Basically, all we have to do is send out a letter to residents soliciting feedback, and then we will be done with that. There is a condition of approval in the staff report that this approval is subject to or contingent upon that letter being, or that AUP case being finalized. So I just wanted to mention that and bring that up. But this is a, like I said, it's an odd-shaped parcel, and we feel the applicant has done a very good job designing this site, given the limitations that are on the site and the, obviously, the odd shape. There is a few residential developments surrounding this property, and of course, medical, future medical to the north. You have an apartment complex, BB Living to the south, and, South and West, right? And then, of course, on the east side, you have some single-family residential. And we have heard from the single-family residential to the east, and actually, I think the gentleman was here. I don't know if he's still here. And he's in support of the project, just had a few questions for us before the meeting, which we were able to, to get addressed. Landscaping on the site, they have about 33% open space in all the parking areas along the southern, eastern borders and along the street frontages. Quite a bit of landscaping, as a matter of fact, as their retention is along the southern and western boundaries in between them and the existing multifamily residential. So quite a bit of landscaping there. The building elevations, all, like I said earlier, all one-story buildings. These buildings are all flat-roofed buildings with parapet walls. They're approximately 22 feet to the, or so, 19 to 20 feet or so to the roof line of the buildings, but obviously, a little over 24, about 24 feet to the top of the parapet walls. A lot of glass. There's stucco, and then there's also different textures of stucco, some, a few metal awnings. And I'm just going to go through these elevations. And then also some kind of like limestone as an alternative or a secondary material on the buildings as well. They have two different color schemes for each building. So this should be buildings, I think this is building type one, the smaller buildings. And then you have the larger buildings as well, and they have some stone on them, too, these larger buildings do. And then I think a little bit of limestone as well. So, so a lot of varying materials and, and two different color schemes, grays and, and some tan colors. As far as public participation is concerned, staff has, prior to the writing of the staff report, staff had not received any comments from surrounding property owners regarding the request. Just like I said earlier, we just talked to the guy, the, one of the neighbors to the east, right before the hearing. He had no made, no concerns, just questions. And given all of that, staff recommends that you approve this design review case and the findings of fact, subject to the conditions that are in, that are in the staff report. And I'm open for any questions if you have any. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Keith. All right. Anybody have any questions or comments? I saw, Commissioner DeGronina?
I was looking for like a head nod or something, and you just kind of-
It's parking again.
Yeah.
Going through all the packets that we, it was a good presentation, Keith, by the way. Going through all the information in the packets that we get, am I a little bit confused? Were they asking for not a 23% reduction in parking, but a 39%? And you're working on that right now? Or is that something that's not going to be discussed or looked at?
Chairman, Commissioner DeGronina, so the parking reduction is for 23%. They did submit later on in the process a 39% parking reduction, but they have withdrawn that, and you'll see that in the agenda. We were going to bring that forward tonight, but that has been withdrawn, and they are sticking with the 23% reduction, which is an administrative use permit. Does that answer your question?
Yes. And you feel comfortable with that reduction?
Chairman, Commissioner DeGronina, we do. We do feel comfortable with that reduction.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else? Commissioner Simon?
Keith, thank you for the presentation. Can you just share some of the logic behind that reduction and why staff is comfortable with that? Just out of curiosity.
Chairman, Commissioner Simon, very good question. So, as I stated, that's part of the AUP process, but from a, the logic behind it, and the applicant can go into more detail with that, too. Lindsay Shuby is here from the, from Gamage and Burnham Law Firm. But some of the logic behind it is, is a lot of times, these medical office buildings have a lot of spaces, unique spaces into the floor plan, where the public just doesn't go. Places like, rooms like, for like MRI machines and X-ray machines, and there could be mechanical rooms and closets and things like that, that you can subtract from, from the footprint or from the floor plan of any given building that would reduce, why should we park those areas? Public doesn't go there. So our code allows us to reduce parking to accommodate those unique areas within a building. So we felt that was appropriate. And also, they provided us some comps of some medical developments in the area. There's one not, a couple of them not too far away. They provided us a comp of like the Ironwood Cancer Center and a few, two medical office building across the street on the west side of Rome and another, actually, two on the west side of Rome, where the parking was approximately, I can't remember exactly what the numbers are. We do have the traffic engineer, I believe she's still here, that could address- We do have the traffic engineer, I believe she's still here, that could address that even more from the applicant's side. But I think they were about, oh, one space, oh, I think it's one space per fourth thousand square feet or so. I can't remember exactly what the number is, but that was very comparable to these other medical office buildings. So when we were looking at the parking in the study with very similar uses, we felt that that was an appropriate number as far as parking spaces per thousand square feet, similar to other medical offices, and that that would work here on this site. So they provided us those comparable numbers. So those are kind of the two main reasons why staff is supporting this. And also, we have not, I mean, in the future, we're hoping to modify parking ratios. And I know you guys have seen the Walker, it's a study that we had done. I know it's not codified.
Keith, my apologies to interrupt, and my apologies, Mr. Chair. Just by way of reminder, this DR case does not include in the agenda any discussion about parking. It looks like that process will be through the administrative process. So I would just have to caution further discussion. That's not currently on the agenda.
But is this not a designer's view?
I'll, I can look into that further. I'm just basing it off of the language that's currently in the agenda.
Okay. I was under the assumption because it was a design review, we're looking at the site. So I apologize if I took us the wrong way.
Okay. I guess I'm still not understanding that. So I kind of agree what he just said. So you're telling me in the agenda, we need to list every single item that we were reviewing on a DR, and if it's not part of it, we can't discuss it? I mean, to me, parking is a design, we just, the previous case, we discussed a lot about parking on that one. Was that on the agenda that we could talk about that? Or on that staff report?
Again, Mr. Chair, there was an item, item number twelve, to specifically discuss parking reduction as it relates to this project, and that was withdrawn because they are looking to pursue the administrative parking reduction process.
I believe what she's referring to is that the allotment of the reduction in parking is allowed by administrative review, not by our board decision to that twenty-three percent.
Well, that was another confusion I had too. I didn't know if we even had the authority to deviate from land development code with a DR case. So what you're saying is, and I think he mentioned it earlier, that there's a use permit application that has been submitted to address all these parking reductions? Okay.
Chairman, Commissioner Anderson, that's correct. And we're almost done with that application.
Okay. And it sounds like you guys are going to support it?
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay. No more talking about parking. Now, any other questions for Keith not about parking? All right. I take it that the applicant looking, chomping at the bit to get up and speak. Please take it over.
Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Commission, Lindsay Shuby, for your record, with the law firm of Gammage and Burnham, forty North Central, Phoenix, Arizona, eight-five-zero-zero-four. And I was raised in the school of Paul Gilbert for ten years, but I hope to use far less words and to have far less of a presentation. I don't, perfect, thank you. I didn't even prepare a presentation. I had full confidence that Keith would do a great one. As far as your assistant town attorney, yes, attorneys generally stay together. I would say on this one, since there's a condition of approval that they have to approve the AUP, that there's some lenience on the parking for this site. And the only thing I would say is, we did do a parking study. We do have a traffic engineer here, Jamie Blakeman with Low Kaihe, who's amazing. But three hundred, at peak parking, we're anticipating three hundred cars. So we actually really stand behind our CUP request for thirty-nine percent. However, in the interest of moving this thing along, I mean, if you have ever seen an irregular-shaped lot, I've worked with a few of you for many years. This is one of the most interesting sites that we've worked on. There were two neighbors outside, Chair. As we said to the president of the HOA, his name was Ray, as well as Dawn and Lori, who live in the out parcel. They had questions about the application. That's why I was standing outside during Mr. Gilbert's presentation. They were, they wanted to ensure a single story. They had questions about the landscaping, open space, and the lighting. So I believe you have a card, Mr. Chair, but I believe they have left us this evening. So they were very happy. They had their questions answered. The public meeting process and the notification process served us all well and enabled to communicate and answer questions. So with that, respectfully request approval. Very excited about this single-story office use here. There's been a number of proposed uses, and, gosh, I can't think of a better compatible neighbor as a buffer to the residential and a complement to the existing medical that's already there. So thank you so much, and stand for questions.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions for the applicant? Well, all right. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I'll just do one, just as a, to make sure Mr. Don Hibbert is not here anymore, because I do have a comment card that I don't want to miss, so I'm not seeing him. I do not have any other comment cards, therefore, I will close the public portion of the, and we'll bring it up here. So any discussion or a motion?
So I just want to understand the procedure here. We're approving the design review here, and there's also a use permit that isn't approved yet, but we've got verbal assurances. We think it'll get approved? Is that, is that, am I understanding correct?
Well, my understanding of it is the, the process of it is that if they don't get that administrative use approval, they'll have to come back to us because the site plan will be based upon that. And therefore, our vote is saying, sure, you can do this. And then if they don't get it, we will have to come back, and then we would likely have to talk about parking. So...
Is that, is that true, Keith? I mean, if we were to approve it tonight, are we approving it the way it's laid out, regardless of the use permit?
Chairman, Commissioner Vice, I'm not used to use the vice chair yet. Vice Chair Fay, I'll get there. Yes, you would be approving it tonight, and this approval tonight would be contingent upon the approval of the AUP. And if the AUP doesn't get approved, then yes, they are going to have to come back with something else, with meeting parking. I don't know. They'd have to come back to you. The approval would be null and void, and they'd have to come back.
So whoever makes the motion technically can motion approval contingent upon blah, blah, blah. And that could be the total motion.
That's, yeah, I was just writing that note down. That's what I heard is we would be doing.
So in lieu of saying, I just approve, let's...
Chairman, if I may interrupt, there is a condition of approval already that states this. So I don't think that you have to, you have to state that in your motion.
Yeah, I think that it's written into it, but...
Okay. Well, if that's the case, Chairman Mont, I would move to approve item thirteen, DR twenty-three dash one five-five with the condition that it's written in.
We have a motion for the approval. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second from Commissioner Gage. Any discussion prior to vote? Not seeing any, please cast your vote when ready. Motion carries six-one.
So just for record, my no vote is, it's not written in the recommended motion, that it's contingent upon that.
I'm reading the recommended motion, and it doesn't make reference to that. So that was the reason for my no vote.
Well, the motion was specifically contingent on the, if it's not there, was that a defective motion?
It's number three.
I'm re, all right. So I'm just reading on page one where the recommended motion is, and it's not listed there. So, I mean, it's passed. Let's just move forward. Okay. It's, the case is passed. Let's just move forward.
Okay, moving right along. We are now going to get into the more fun parts of the evening and go to item number fourteen, Z twenty-four dash oh-five, the LDC text amendment. Eva.
Good evening, Chair and Commission.
Eva, just one second. I was just going to ask, in the interest of if there's someone here on item number seventeen, should we do...
Yes, I think you should move me to the end.
Okay, very good, yeah. Well, we'll just, no disrespect, of course, but we'll move on. And first, just because we love to hear from Keith, let's jump down to number seventeen, S twenty-four dash oh-five, signature at Santan Village, and let Mr. Keith Newman tell us a little bit about that. Thank you.
Yes, I'm sure you guys are tired of me by now. I'm tired of me. Yeah, I figured as much. All right, last one of the night. Chairman, Members of the Commission, my last presentation tonight is for Signature Santan Village preliminary plat. I'll try to make this brief. You guys all know where the site is located, over in Santan Village area, north of Williams Field and Santan Village Parkway. We came before you in June to get approval of the design review case. It's received that approval. Now, we're coming back to you for the preliminary plot for eleven lots. The site is a little over thirty acres in size for a commercial development on this property, which is vacant farmland at the current moment. I know you guys have seen this design before, eleven total lots. It's the exact same design that came before you in June for approval for the design review case. They haven't changed it. And all the streets, all the interior driveways, drive aisles, entrances are all in the exact same spot. As we know, this development's highlighted by Dick's Sporting Goods, Whole Foods, pad shop, pad sites, inline shops. It's a large commercial development that we're very excited to get under construction. They have CDs in the system already. They're with our town. The engineering and building department are processing those at the current moment. They just want to subdivide the lot so they can sell them to each individual tenant or each individual user. I don't know how many users they have as of right now, or how many contracts they have signed, but I know that they have at least four or five of them. They may have more. But they're trying to obviously sell the rest of them, so that's why they're coming before you tonight. So these are sheets of the plat in more detail, which, lotting design you've already seen. Landscaping, there's twenty-three percent. I know you've already seen this landscaping plan. All the landscaping in the parking lot along the perimeters, I know you've reviewed and approved. It's the same exact design that was approved before. Public participation, we haven't received any comments from surrounding property owners regarding the request. Staff recommends that you approve this and the findings of fact, subject to any conditions. And I'm open for any questions if you have any. And also, the owner of the property, Tyler Swear, is here too, and he can also answer questions if you would like him to as well. Thank you.
Very well. Thank you, Keith. Anybody have any questions for Keith on this one? Commissioner Gage?
I don't have any questions, but I'll make a motion if everybody else is cool with it.
Wow. Second? Okay. Let's not get too out of our britches here. And go ahead, okay, you want to make the motion, like, and actually say the numbers, please? For our legal friends.
Do we need to, I'm sorry, do we need to go through the process, close the public hearing?
Yeah, I know. Okay. Well, thank you, Keith. And the applicant, then, I don't think needs to speak. I don't see anyone here in the public that, in the clamoring crowd right now, that is seeking to speak on this. So I will close the public comment, bring it to the dais for discussion or a motion.
I make a motion to approve S twenty-four dash zero-five, signature at Santan Village.
We have a motion from Commissioner Gage. Do we have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Vice Chairman comes in with a second. Any discussion? Not seeing any. Everyone, please cast your vote when ready. Motion carries seven-zero. Thank you very much. Okay, now, without further ado, we will move on to Z twenty-four dash oh-five, LDC text amendment, item number fourteen. And Ms. Eva, once again, thank you.
Thank you, and good evening once again, Chair and Commissioners. We've discussed this before at a work-study session. As you may be aware, there's a large demand for guest homes, accessory dwelling units, and large accessory structures in the town and in surrounding municipalities. House Bill twenty-seven-twenty was recently passed, and it is to provide a path forward to, for people to develop ADUs. In furtherance of that goal, I've put a short comparison together between the town's current land development code and the House Bill. Currently, the town of Gilbert allows accessory dwelling units, guest homes, and secondary dwellings in single-family zones from SF-six to SF-forty-three. And we allow one guest home and one secondary dwelling unit. House Bill twenty-seven-twenty is similar. It expands the zones to all single-family zones. So we would now include single-family attached and single-family detached zones. It allows one detached ADU and one attached ADU. We currently allow two. It would still allow two, but it would also allow a third if you have a lot over an acre, and if you're agreeable to making the third an affordable unit. Our LDC currently has guest homes that cannot be rented and secondary dwelling units that can be rented. House Bill twenty-seven-twenty requires the town to allow advertisement of any ADU for long-term leasing. You do not have to have a relationship with the owner and the renter. And it added language about short-term rentals, that we cannot require the owner to reside on the property if they are to do a short-term rental if the ADU was built after the effective date of this amendment. The effective date of this amendment was September fourteenth. So if an ADU was built prior to that, we can require that the owner reside on the property, and we will require that. If it's built after September fourteenth, the owner can rent it out without having to reside on the property. Currently, the LDC allows guest homes and secondary dwellings. Only secondary dwellings can have kitchens. Under the new House Bill, there's no distinction between a guest home or a secondary dwelling, and it's up to the applicant whether or not they would like a kitchen. Currently, accessories, I'm sorry, accessory dwelling units must be located within the building envelope unless they're over a detached garage. This is one of the largest changes. Under House Bill twenty-seven-twenty, the accessory dwelling unit would still need to meet the front yard setback of the main structure, but side and rear yards could only have a setback of a minimum of five feet, is all we could impose. Currently, if you have a large lot like in R forty-three, the side and rear setbacks are thirty and forty feet. Our current LDC says that incidental dwelling unit shall be subordinate to the primary dwelling. That's similar in the House Bill. It says a single-family home must be of greater square footage. But it then goes on to further define it, saying an accessory dwelling unit can be seventy-five percent of the gross floor area of the main dwelling, or a thousand square feet, whichever is less. Currently, we have residents that wish to build accessory dwelling units larger than a thousand square feet. We want to permit this, so we're putting in language that if you want an accessory dwelling unit over a thousand square feet, you go by the existing LDC process and standards. So the House Bill would apply to accessory dwelling units that are a thousand square feet and less. Under the current code, we require that the... Under the current code, we require that the accessory dwelling unit match the architectural design of the main. Under the House bill, we cannot do that. It specifically says you cannot require that it match the main. Under the LDC, we currently require an onsite parking spot for the ADU. Again, under the House bill, we are prohibited from requiring an onsite parking space for the ADU. And for ADUs, we currently require an administrative use permit, which requires notification of the neighbors. Under the House bill, they are permitted as of right, and the planning staff just has a discretionary site plan review to make sure that it conforms to the zoning regulations I've just gone through. And it states that if we fail to adopt these new regulations by January first, then accessory dwelling units shall be allowed without limits on any residential lot in the town. To prevent that, we have drafted some changes to the LDC. The majority of those are on this slide. We've changed incidental dwelling unit to accessory dwelling unit. We're allowing them in all single-family residential zones. We're allowing one attached, one detached, and an additional third accessory dwelling unit if you're over an acre and you wish to make it affordable. We're limiting the ADUs that are governed by these new regulations to seventy-five percent of the gross floor area of the main, or a thousand square feet, whichever is less. They still have to meet the lot coverage of the zone, but they only need to meet the front yard setback. They can now have five-foot front and rear setbacks, but we are requiring a step back. You can be ten feet tall at the five-foot setback, and then for each foot above ten foot, you must step back an additional foot from the five-foot setback. And while we can't require that the accessory dwelling unit match the architecture of the main, we are putting in design guidelines from the town subdivision, design and development guidelines. These are applied to all single-family homes and have been in existence since, I believe, nineteen ninety-nine. Lastly, just a reminder that we do want to allow accessory dwelling units over a thousand square feet in the town, so if a resident wishes to build one over a thousand square feet, they would use the town's existing administrative use permit process and the standards set in the code. Next step, should this be approved or recommended for approval this evening, it will go to a town council hearing on December third, which should meet our deadline of December first to have this in the LDC. So I tried to go through that as quickly as possible, as I believe you have heard this all before from me, but if you have any questions, I'm certainly available.
All right, thank you very much, Eva. Does anyone have any questions relating to this LDC text amendment? Seems you've covered it quite thoroughly. Thank you very much. I will, there's no one here that is here to speak on this, so I will close the public comment then and bring it up for discussion or a motion.
Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve item fourteen, Z is in Zulu two-four, Tac zero-five, for the land development code text amendment.
We have a motion from the vice chair. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Commissioner DeGervina with the second. And no discussion, I assume, so please cast your vote when ready. Motion carries seven-zero. And now, we will move on to item number fifteen, Z twenty-four dash oh-nine, another LDC text amendment for adaptive reuse, and Veronica Gonzalez.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I'm here to talk about a proposed text amendment for adaptive reuse. First, a little bit of history. This bill was signed into law by the governor in April of 2024 pertaining to standards for multifamily residential development and adaptive reuse. As you will recall, August seventh of this year, we conducted a citizen review and initiated the text amendment. Then we had a study session with the council on October twenty-second, and our required compliance date for this bill is January first, 2025. So House Bill twenty-two ninety-seven applies to all cities and towns with a population of a hundred and fifty thousand or more. The bill allows multifamily development or adaptive reuse on up to ten percent of the town's existing commercial office and mixed-use buildings without a use permit, rezoning, or really any kind of public hearing. Eligible buildings must be in disrepair or have a fifty percent vacancy, and they must be located on parcels that are at least one acre in size but no larger than twenty acres. Parking requirements shall not exceed our current ratios, and existing building heights and setbacks shall be nonconforming for the proposed new use. Applicants are also allowed to demolish a portion of the building. If the proposed adaptive reuse is for multifamily development, there are some additional requirements that include height and density shall not exceed that of the highest allowable multifamily zoning within one mile of the building to be redeveloped. If there is no multifamily zoning within one mile, the height and density of the closest multifamily zoning would apply. There is a maximum height of five stories unless the site is within a hundred feet of existing single-family zoning, where the max height would then be two stories. All or a portion of the building may be demolished if it's for multifamily development, and at least ten percent of the dwelling units must be designated as low income, moderate income, or a combination of the two for at least twenty years from initial occupation. So as I noted earlier, the town may designate ten percent of its existing commercial office and mixed-use buildings that are eligible for the multifamily development or adaptive reuse. Staff performed an analysis, and we found that there are eight-hundred-and-fifty-four existing buildings, commercial office and mixed-use buildings, on parcels that are at least one acre of size and no larger than twenty, which means there would be eighty-five buildings that could be eligible. And this may be modified every ten years. And what we're looking at here is a depiction of where those eight-hundred-and-fifty-four buildings are located in the town. In addition to this, though, the bill does allow the town to designate certain areas where those existing buildings would be excluded from the requirements. However, the total number of buildings within those areas cannot exceed ten percent of the total existing number of buildings, so no more than eighty-five buildings within these designated areas. So in consultation with our economic development department, we identified the following areas to basically protect from the requirements of this bill. So one of those areas is the Heritage District. The next area would be the southeast corner of Val Vista and Baseline, where the former Fry's Shopping Center is. We also are designating the southeast section of Gilbert and Jermaine. And finally, we're looking at the area south of Williamsfield Road on the west side of the two-oh-two, so just basically south of the Santan Mall. This is not to say that we don't support adaptive reuse in these areas, but what we want to do is to be able to retain the ability to review those types of requests through our normal processes, meaning public hearings if necessary. These areas that we would exempt from the requirements could be modified every ten years. So I threw kind of a lot of ten percent provisions at you, so I just want to provide some clarification. So there are three ten percent buckets, we'll say. The first is multifamily development or adaptive reuse is allowed on up to ten percent of all existing commercial office and mixed-use buildings. The second bucket is that the town may exclude certain areas, but the number of buildings within those areas may not exceed ten percent of the existing buildings. And finally, the third bucket is if the adaptive reuse is multifamily, at least ten percent of those dwelling, of those units must be designated as low, moderate, or a combination of the two, low, moderate income, or a combination of the two for at least twenty years. So our next steps is we are going to counsel for their consideration of this text amendment on December third, and as I'd mentioned before, the requirements must be effective by January first, 2025. With that, staff recommends that the planning commission move to recommend to the town council approval of this text amendment pertaining to adaptive reuse, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Veronica. Anyone have any questions related to this? Not seeing any? I will then close the public hearing and bring it up for any discussion or a motion.
Chair, I'll make a motion. Make a motion to recommend approval of Z twenty-four dash zero-nine LDC text amendment.
I will second his motion.
We have a motion from Commissioner Simon and a second from Vice Chair Fay. Please cast your vote. And motion carries seven-zero. Thank you, Veronica.
Thank you.
Now, we will move on to item number sixteen, another Z twenty-four dash thirteen LDC text amendment for zoning applications, and bring Eva back.
Hello again, Chair and Commission. As mentioned, this is relating to timeframes for review of residential zoning. And the Senate adopted Senate Bill eleven-sixty-two, and it requires that municipalities comply with timeframes for review of all residential zoning applications. And I underlined residential. It's not all of our application. It is our multifamily, single-family residential zoning applications. The first timeframe is the administrative completeness timeframe. So after staff receives an application accompanied by the fee, staff must review it and make a determination as to whether or not it is complete within thirty days. This should not be an issue. Our current timeframe is fifteen days, and we do it in a shorter timeframe than that. Once we, if we determine it's not complete, we have to send a comprehensive list of items back to the applicant. Once we receive the resubmital, we then have fifteen days to do the completeness review. Again, that's not a concern. Then, once it is deemed complete, it gets resubmitted, and staff then has a hundred and eighty days from when it's resubmitted to when town council shall approve or deny the application. That's a little trickier because we can only control the time that we have in our hands, but the way the bill is written, it's a hundred days from when they submit to when town council approves or denies it. Town staff can do an extension of a one-time thirty days, and the applicant can do numerous extensions thirty days apiece. While reviewing the section on final decisions, we looked at what our current process is for non-residential approvals, and we realized there was an error in that section in the code. For the deciding bodies, we had everybody but the town council, so I thought I should probably add the town council back in. So that is what this slide shows. Also, in Senate Bill eleven-sixty-two, there was clarification of the protest procedures. Protest procedures are if an application is filed and owners around the project are in opposition to it, they can get together, and if twenty percent or more get together to oppose it, it can trigger a supermajority vote. The changes made to this are that that twenty percent excludes government-owned property, and there's also clarification as to how the vote goes if a council member has a conflict of interest. So we'll just be adding in the language in red. Next step for this tonight is the planning commission hearing. Should you recommend approval to council? The council hearing is December third, and that should help us meet our deadline of January first to have the LDC revised. And that concludes my presentation, unless there are any questions at this time.
Very well. Any questions for Eva? All righty then, not seeing any? I'll look to the crowd. I don't see anyone waiting to speak on this item. Therefore, I will close the public hearing, and I will bring it back up to the dais for discussion or a motion.
I just want to say I'm so happy to see this limit on these review times because they go way, way, way too long. And so if no one else has any comments, I'm ready to make a motion on this. All right, I recommend approval for Z twenty-four dash one-three, the LDC text amendment for the zoning applications.
We have a motion from Commissioner Gage. Do I have a second?
I would second her motion.
Vice Chairman Fay with the second. Not seeing any discussion, please cast your vote. And the motion carries seven-zero. Thank you all very much. Okay, moving on now to administrative items. Administrative items are for the commission discussion in action. It is the discretion of the majority of the commission regarding public input requests on any administrative item. Persons wishing to speak on an administrative item should complete a public comment form indicating the number they wish to speak on, and the commission may or may not accept said public comment. Item number eighteen is 2025 Planning Commission Meeting Minutes. Consider the approval, or meetings, not meeting minutes, consider the approval of the 2025 calendar regular meetings. What does everyone think about 2025's meetings?
Do we have a choice?
Apparently, we do. We could not pass it, and then I guess do it again next month. Yeah, that's right. Okay.
Chair, if you need a motion, I'll make a motion to approve the
I believe we do, sir, yeah.
Calendar.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Simon to approve the 2025 calendar.
I'll second it.
We have a second from Commissioner DeGervina. Please cast your vote when it's ready. Okay. And just like that, motion carries seven-zero. Okay. Now, we'll move on to item number nineteen, which is the planning commission minutes. Let's consider the approval from the study session and regular meeting of October second, 2024. If everyone's reviewed that, does anyone have any amendments?
I do. I was absent at that meeting, and as I was present, so if we could change that, please.
Okay. Anyone else not here? I know Vice Chairman Fay wasn't when he was put into the vice chairmanship, which was fun for all. I tried to stop them, but...
I remember that argument going about point oh-five seconds.
Yeah. And so for this, then, would I make the motion to approve with that amendment? And then, okay, so we can then entertain a motion with the approval contingent upon changing that Commissioner Gage was in fact not present.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes with the change that Commissioner Gage suggested.
Commissioner DeGervina with the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Simon. Please cast your vote. Six-one, one defector. Vice Chairman Fay not in favor. Okay, moving on to communications. Executive session does not exist. Item number twenty, then, report from chairman and members of the commission on current events. Anybody have anything they would like to share? Well, I will share that I was coaching Little League at the Gilbert American Little League, and tonight was the last game for my sixes and sevens team, and I told them, because of my vice chairman being appointed in absentia, that I, the coach, was not going to be able to be there tonight. So I just wanted to give a shout out to them and to the parents that also helped, but, you know, apology that I couldn't be there, gentlemen, but good game. And it's his fault, and let the record reflect. Okay.
I'll share something.
Yes, yeah, Commissioner Yes, yeah, Commissioner DeGervina?
Yeah, there's going to be a, they call it the Cool Car Show at the Islands on Saturday, November 9th, and it's fun to attend.
Oh, nice. So we'll have a car show. I guess I could bring my Hyundai. People don't want to see that. Okay. Okay, then we'll go on to the last item on the agenda, last but not least. Item number 21, report from the Planning Services Manager on current events, Eva.
Thank you, Chairman. I would just like to welcome our newest commissioner, Commissioner Hong, and to congratulate Vice Chair Fay on his vice chairmanship. I'd also like to wish our veterans a Happy Veterans Day.
Yes, I concur. Okay, well, that would be the end of it, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn because I, of course, am not a dictator.
I will move to adjourn this meeting.
We have a motion to adjourn from Commissioner Davis. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Simon. Please cast your vote. Motion carries six one. Commissioner Gage not in favor. She can stay, the gavel has spoken. Thank you all. Okay, Eva, do I, are you going to reprint it, or should I cross out Commissioner Gage on this?